Welcome, and I'm going to call the order. The February 24th Waynesboro City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance. Mr. Wood, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. If you wish to speak at a scheduled public hearing or at the citizens' comment, there's signup sheets in the back of the chamber that you can sign up for those. Item two on the adoption is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item three is matters from the mayor, and I have a few things. February is School Board Appreciation Month. School Board Appreciation Month in Virginia, this is a great opportunity to recognize and thank Waynesboro's school board members, and they are Amber Lyskam, she is Ward D and Chair of the school, of the board, Nigel Stewart, at-large and Vice Chair, Diana Williams, who's Ward A, Erica Smith, Ward B, and Deborah Freeman, who's Ward C. We'd like to thank the school board and school board members for their service in supporting Waynesboro students and family. Waynesboro recently earned the designation as a storm-ready community by the National Weather Service. This designation is provided through Waynesboro's improving comeliness and effectiveness of hazardous weather warnings, diligent and proactive approach to increasing communication and preparedness. Storm Ready uses a grassroots approach to help communities develop plans to handle all types of extreme weather, from tornadoes to winter storms. The program encourages communities to take a new proactive approach to improving local hazardous weather operations by providing emergency managers with clear-cut guidelines on how to improve their hazardous weather operations. So we'd like to send a special thanks to Gary Kreiser and his staff for their leadership and work on that enhanced level of service. And then finally, I'd like to recognize a dignitary in the chambers, and that is the Mayor of Dayton, Virginia, Mayor Sam Lee is in attendance. He is also my first cousin, so I'm happy to see you and honored that you showed up. And also, my first cousin, his brother, Wendell Lee, is in the house as well. So thank you all for coming out. And that's all I have for matters from the mayor. Item four is matters from council members.
Just ask council if having three Lees in the room constitutes a quorum. I don't have anything.
I'd like to recognize the city crews for doing a really good job in this last round of winter storms. I've actually received positive feedback about our roads with the speed with which they got them cleared, so that was a positive. I would also like to send my condolences to family members of the officers that were killed in the line of duty in Virginia Beach and let them know that our prayers are with their family.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane.
Yep. Yeah, the 12th of this month, I had the pleasure of going to Richmond, going to the General Assembly to discuss with elected officials and committee members and such the, some of the goings-on in Waynesboro, try to promote some good Waynesboro of will. We talked a lot about the Natural History Museum. Also talked on behalf of constitutional offices, trying to get more funding from them through the state. I had a whole agenda of things. We talked about the Children's Advocacy Center. And I spent pretty much the whole day, from office to office and appointment to appointment. One thing I will say that was consistent about the whole day was the amount of officials in the General Assembly Building that constantly talked about how impressed they were with the direction that Waynesboro is going in, both in just the way we operate our city on a daily basis, as well as the growth of our city. So really, I'd just like to report to all you all that we are making an impression in Richmond, and I applaud the work that my colleagues here do and our staff does. To get feedback like that is wonderful, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Conby. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item six is to receive a report on the Stanton-Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization's work on the update of the Long Range Transportation Plan. And we have with us Mr. Zach Beard and Mr. Gareth Bartholomew from the CSPDC.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. My name is Gareth Bartholomew. I am the Transportation Planner with the Stanton-Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is staffed by members of the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. Thank you for your time this evening. I had the opportunity to present to this body in September where we discussed Phase One of our public engagement efforts for the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. Tonight, I'm excited to share progress as we move into Phase Two of the planning process, where I'll be presenting about the draft list based on the public input that we've received. I'd like to acknowledge that when I came to you this body last, we had different membership, and so I was able to introduce in September where we were with our 2050 Long Range Plan and Phase One efforts. And I would like to, before getting into that discussion of the Long Range Transportation Plan, like to step back and talk a little bit about our MPO. The Stanton-Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization is the regional transportation planning body for the cities of Stanton, cities of Stanton, Waynesboro, and the urbanized portions of Augusta County, which includes Fishersville, Stuart's Draft, Verona, and areas along US 11 and along US 340, including Blue Ridge Community College and Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport. As you can see from this map, we have a planning area that encompasses most of the major transportation corridors in the Saw area, including key arterial roads throughout the region such as US 340, US 11, and US 250. So our Stanton-Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, from henceforth I will call Saw MPO, it has a policy board, which is comprised of city, county, and agency staff, and a technical advisory committee, which is composed of staff, and the policy board, I should say, is composed of policymakers, including Mr. Wood, excluding staff, this is Mr. Todd Wood, and previously, including Mr. Short. We, most of what we, or has relationship with the Saw MPO. Most of what we do is encompassed under two sections. One is long-range planning, what I'm talking about tonight with the LRTP, which is our 25-year transportation plan, similar to the comp plan for our Saw MPO, along with short-range planning, which is in-depth, small-area studies that we conduct to undergo, understand a little bit more about existing conditions, safety and congestion needs, and propose recommendations and cost estimates to ensure that projects can go through a pipeline to get funding at a later date. Going to talk about the Long Range Transportation Plan. The LRTP identifies transportation needs over the next 25 years and potential transportation projects that could be constructed based on available funding over that 25-year period. It covers all modes of transportation, driving in cars, walking, biking, taking the bus, et cetera. As I said, the plan is like a comprehensive plan for a locality, but instead of focusing on all of the different aspects of a community, we just focus on transportation. A major goal that we have for this LRTP process is to engage more stakeholders than ever before in the planning process. Historically, our Long Range Transportation Plan has been very data-driven and focused primarily on congestion data and VDOT safety data, which are very important to identify needs and projects, but it has not always emphasized enough the importance of collecting public information and input to inform the plan's priorities and projects. While we were able to successfully reach 284 members of our Saw MPO community via our Phase One outreach, we hope to expand and increase this engagement to ensure that all members of the Saw MPO plan are reflected as part of this process. So as I mentioned, we have completed Phase One, which is our visioning process, during which we collected extensive feedback to create a community vision for what the future of transportation over the next 25 years will look like across our three localities. Phase Two, which we're going under right now, is the proposed project list. So after Phase One, we were able to gather input from our locality's staff and policymakers and design a map of potential regional projects that address the needs and priorities of those identified in Phase One. And then finally, in Phase Three, we will propose the draft plan for review from the public and policymakers, along with the funding constraints, and submit it for the board's approval in December 2025. So this is, demonstrates the general feedback and as comprehensive list of some of the transportation concerns that members of Waynesboro or commuters within Waynesboro had for some of the challenges of transportation. For walking and biking challenges, the public highlighted some significant needs along Main Street from Wayne Avenue to Arch Avenue, Broad Street near Main, Wayne Avenue near the library, and several other highly-trafficked corridors by bicycles and pedestrians within the city. Safety concerns were most notable at Main Street near Wayne Avenue and Walmart, the busy Rossar Avenue corridor near Ludewitt Boulevard and the high school, along with several other key intersections. And the top congestion issues that were noted by the public were Route 340 and Rossar Avenue. As part of this process, we developed six LRTP goals through coordination with staff and through each of our three MPO localities. This was approved of by our MPO board as these six main goals to reflect the ranked priority that localities have, along with the ranking priority from the public's input. The first is safety, the goal to improve safety for all users of our transportation system. Second, efficient system management, ensuring our transportation network operates with as minimum congestion as possible. Third is accessibility, making sure transportation options are open and available to all residents. Fourth is land use coordination, aligning transportation projects with local development plans. Fifth is economic development, to ensure that economic growth can be sustained through strategic transportation investments. And then finally, environmental sustainability, minimizing the environmental impacts while meeting existing transportation needs. So these goals serve as our evaluation criteria as we prioritize potential projects in Phase Two. So as part of Phase Two, we have launched a new website, our, through a program called Social Pinpoint. The website portal captures all of our online resources for the Long Range Transportation Plan at this website, connect.cspdc.org/sawmpolrtp. You have been included on our mailing list, so you don't have to necessarily remember this link, but this is a one-stop shop for where the public can learn about the plan and all of our interactive tools. The website features our Phase Two public engagement opportunities, including a description of the plan, the projects, and importantly, the central focus is our interactive project map, where residents can provide direct feedback on specific projects and the studies we're proposing. This map here has four different icons to represent different types of transportation improvements or studies. Yellow signal, yellow traffic signals signifying intersection projects, blue roadway signifying a roadway project, the little person icon in green is a pedestrian project, and then purple signifying proposed studies. This is a sample project view of what an individual will see if they click on one of the projects, this showing the Delphine Avenue and Hopeman Parkway intersection improvements. What an individual will see if they click on a project is a very simple question, whether or not they approve, thumbs up, thumbs down of a project, along with additional comments if they have feedback. We're keenly interested on both whether they like the project or not, but even more so telling us a little bit more about how this proposed improvement or project would impact their day-to-day life, or any thoughts that they have that can go into development of this project over the next 25 years. The other type of pin drop is our studies. These ask a little bit more of a Likert scale question, one through five, whether or not individuals feel that this is an urgent need at that specific intersection, and then similarly, what comments they have for us as part of this process. So the projects themselves, through our work with the Technical Advisory Committee, which includes staff from Waynesboro Planning and Public Works Departments, we were able to identify several key projects for the city of Waynesboro, and I can highlight just a couple of the important projects that we have as part of this. The Delphine Avenue and Hopeman Parkway, the intersection improvements that you saw before, will help to address safety concerns by realigning the approaches to that intersection and updating signal controls. And then important for the city of Waynesboro, but also regionally, is the Rockfish Gateway Shared Use Path that will connect from Sunset Park to the Crowe Tunnel, Western Portal Trailhead. There are additional projects here, including those multiple at South Delphine Avenue and pedestrian improvements all along Ludewitt Boulevard up through Rossar. For studies, we have included four studies based on public input from Phase One and ongoing coordination with city staff. One major one is proposed, a proposed Waynesboro pedestrian and bicycle plan study, which will comprehensively assess the city's walking and biking network and identify any gaps and needed improvements in that process. Secondly, one to highlight is the US 340 Rossar Avenue Safety and Congestion Study, which will address crash trends and congestion issues from North Gate Avenue to the southern study limits. So these proposed studies, if included over the next 25 years, the goal will be to have a small-area study that the MPO will conduct to be able to set them, set this up for a future project that can get funded over the next couple of years. So to gather feedback from these proposed projects and studies, we've scheduled several public engagement events during February and March. March 1st, this Saturday, we will be at Stanton YMCA from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and then moving to Augusta County on March 4th to Stuart's Draft High School from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., and then coming back to Waynesboro on March 29th at the Waynesboro YMCA. Staff will be available at each of these locations with the map that you saw, along with additional project information and the opportunity for the public to have in-person direct feedback. And we've chosen these locations to attempt to ensure that members from all localities are able to participate. If individuals are not able to participate in these in-person locations, they are very much welcome to take the survey online. So we do need your help as community leaders to spread the word about these engagement opportunities. We would appreciate the opportunity to share your thoughts as individuals and citizens of the Saw MPO region, but also encourage your constituents to learn more about the LRTP process and be able to go to connect.cspdc.org/sawmpolrtp to learn more about the projects and be able to weigh in on this interactive map. So that's all I have for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I want to thank you again for your support and assistance with improving transportation in Waynesboro and in the Saw region. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Maybe one question relative to the Rossar improvement, safety study, right? So I think it was on that one right there at the bottom. Crash changes in congestion on the road from North Gate to the southern city limits. We could talk offline. I'm curious what, how is this, how this is different than the signal optimization and controller study that was funded, that's funded in the queue? I'm just curious what the difference would be. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, no action is required this evening.
Thank you so much.
So if there's no other questions, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item seven is to hold a public hearing on an application for certificate of public necessity and convenience to operate a taxi cab or vehicle for higher service in Waynesboro. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, sir. Mr. Zubin Rotwani, owner of Valley Shuttle Services LLC, has submitted an application for public necessity and convenience to operate a shuttle service in Waynesboro. The Waynesboro Police Department, as required under Chapter 94 of the city code, has completed their investigation and review of Mr. Rotwani and found no disqualifiers. The next step of the process is for council to hold a public hearing and gather or receive community input on the application. And at that point this evening, if council is so inclined, you may by motion approve the applicant's request for a certificate of public convenience and necessity. By way of extra information, part of the review process undertaken by the police department is a review of the vehicles that will be used in the business and the equipment used to determine fare, et cetera. So it's a pretty, by local standards, heavily regulated, and that's to ensure customer fairness and public safety. But the review comes back completely favorably. So with that, we can have the public hearing and then consider the application.
Thank you. I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. Are there any questions from council? Is there a motion to grant the certificate of public necessity and convenience?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in, say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item eight is to hold a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance providing for the city's participation in the CPACE program. Ms. Hamm?
Yes, sir. The council will recall that about two meetings ago, Mr. Hitchens gave a thorough presentation of the CPACE program and the ordinance required for council to authorize the city's participation in that program. This evening, we'll have a public hearing, and given that the ordinance has been properly introduced, seconded, and discussed, the council can consider approval following the public hearing. Mr. Hitchens can furnish some summary comments at this point, or we can move directly to the public hearing, whatever the council's preference is.
Would the council prefer, like Mr. Kitchen?
Yeah, I think he was there the first time, so we can move to the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. Any other questions? Is there a motion to adopt the CPACE ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Conby. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item nine is to receive a presentation by EPR PC on the city's comprehensive plan update. And we have with us Mr. Will Cockrell, who is the principal planner with EPR.
Great, well, thank you for having us here this evening. Will Cockrell with EPR PC, here with my colleague Nancy Etrow, also with EPR. Drove up from Blacksburg on the way back home to Charlottesville and took some mountain roads on the way back, but we, we did make it here. Oh, we will be kicking off the comprehensive plan update here for you all. Wanted to provide a very brief presentation here and get a little feedback from you all in terms of direction. Make sure that you all have an opportunity to afford, to voice your kind of ideas and direction for us as we take these initial steps, and want to make sure that we also set up a good process for checking back in with you and getting that direction throughout the process. We're going to talk very briefly, anyone who is not as familiar with comprehensive plans in Virginia, just a real touch, quick touch on that one. The existing comprehensive plan, we did send out some questions ahead of time and consolidated those to help us identify what are some measures of success for you all as a city, what makes a successful engagement process, what makes a successful planning process as we move forward. But first off, the comp plan, different communities might call it different things. Comprehensive plan sounds very bureaucratic sounding, but it's not a policy document, it's, it's the policy document in local government. So really, any investment, any code changes, any programs, initiatives, policies, so forth, it usually starts with the comprehensive plan. That is the policy document in local government. In Virginia, this document is required. Every jurisdiction must have a comprehensive plan. Not every state does that. Zoning is not required in Virginia, but comp plans are. They also must be reviewed every five years. And this would be part of, part of your update here as, as we go through this process. And on the other end, what we really are developing here is, it's also a legislative to-do list for the local legislature. So you all as a local legislature, and then for the planning commission to really give them that guidebook for moving the community forward. Comprehensive plan is usually about a 20-year planning horizon, but usually build in that five, 10-year marks of what you hope to achieve. We try to aim for visions and goals that are ambitious but achievable, and making sure that you have the tools that you need to achieve, achieve those actions. Another aspect of comprehensive plans is really, it's, it's great to have that vision, but vision without the, the next steps, without the tools put in place to show that is, is really just a dream. And action without that vision there is, is, is a good way to, to waste time. So whenever we think about the taxpayer dollar, we want to be careful with those dollars and that we prioritize on where those resources go, and that's really where the comprehensive plan comes in play, where we, we ensure that those, that those limited resources go towards what the community's goals are. All right, a real quick look at the existing comprehensive plan. Currently, that document has three parts in it. The, the first one, introduction, the foundational language of, of the plan, and then some big things, some, some, some big ideas and data included in here. Part two is really the heart of the document, which includes education, economy, infrastructure, quality of life, and also neighborhoods. And then part three is that implementation side. So just checking in on, on what the, the existing document is here. As I mentioned, we did send a questionnaire out ahead of time to get some feedback, some initial feedback on the existing comprehensive plan and what, what the decision-makers are looking for in the, the new comprehensive plan update. Going to touch on these questions that went out just very briefly, and then I'd love to get some additional feedback from you all on those next steps. So first off, we, we asked, how would you rate the existing comp plan in terms of usability? On the far left is easy to use, and the far right, less easy to use, or maybe confusing. The planning commissioners, as they were responding to this, seemed to be more on that right side here, finding it a little more confusing. Otherwise, from kind of the local legislator perspective, a little bit more of a bell curve here. So it looks like we've, we've got some work to do there with the update of making it more user-friendly. As a public document, it should be something that anyone in the community can pick up, understand what the direction is, and have a good idea of what it is Waynesboro is trying to accomplish. A few specific comments back on how can we make it more user-friendly? We've got some comments on considering, considering an online format to make it easy to access, have a data-driven approach, so that any policies that are identified here are built on good data that's giving that direction here. Also, creating more approachable illustrations and graphics, this one up here on the, the far- Also, creating more approachable illustrations and graphics, this one up here on the far left is from the existing comp plan. I think good data analysis in here, also got, you know, some compliments on the existing plan, but some of those graphics, you know, a little hard, a little hard to maybe understand. So trying to simplify those up and make it easier to communicate. Simplify the document so citizens can understand that there, as well as provide a summary page. I think that's a great comment of having kind of summary profiles and sheets that anyone can pick up and just have a quick glance and get that guidance, get that understanding. As a city, it's helpful to you as well when you have developers come in. You can show them with a quick, you know, a quick document that they can review of what your direction is to communicate that to them as well. Been to the eye doctor and great feedback here, but also kind of a one-two type of calibration here as we try to understand the feedback in terms of moving forward. So given, I guess, the feedback and comments there, I'd love to get some additional comments from you all, if that's allowable, of kind of that direction in terms of issues. Are those comments on about right? Have we communicated those back correctly or any corrections there?
You know, so on that last topic?
Yeah.
You know, I think that seems just to, you know, I think as expected, it's, I think, just another sort of table-setting moment for it a little bit is that the previous plan was the first update from the plan in 20 years, right? So it was definitely an out-of-the-box comprehensive plan into that sort of context and was not scoped to be a cover-to-cover update. And was really more about, I think, as I noted a couple of times in my survey response relative to public engagement and how to engage in collecting and disseminating public feedback. So just as a little, another table-setting for that.
Yeah, I think I shared with Mr. Cockrell early on that it's very important that we get that community engagement to make this plan what it should be, and it's about, you know, the entire city. And so I kind of foot-stomped that with them to, you know, make that a priority.
Sure. Part of being able to do that is going to be layering it where you have a simplified, like checklist that hits points, the powerpoints that we can hit to the community, to kind of have them guide us generally, and then we can get into more specifics. But that would be beneficial to get more involvement, because if you go at them with a pamphlet, it's a whole lot better than if you go at them with a phone book.
Yeah.
It's kind of funny. I didn't know what any of you all's response was, but it sounds like we all said the same thing. It was pretty close.
It's very close.
Yeah.
They set the bar high. They had a very, very successful community engagement event in Stanton. So I told Mr. Cockrell, they've set the bar, so we're looking for some.
Game on.
Some good things. So any other questions?
Had just a few more slides, if you'll allow them. We did ask about what topics needed the most attention, and with a comprehensive plan, all those topics will receive attention, but which ones really needed that extra focus? It sounded like housing and economic development really stood out as really key topics here. Development as well of just, especially with new housing development and additional development in the city of just ways of managing that, making sure the using of public resources is efficient to help serve that new development. Also asked other main issues in the city. Had a lot of comments here about affordable housing and quality rental options. Managing budgets and responsible spending came up multiple times. Looking for record-breaking public engagement here, community-driven quality-of-life projects need attention are main issues. Having a competitive downtown, balanced growth, housing and economic development in the city, finding achievable solutions specifically geared towards youth and future generations. I will say that Nancy Etrow here is doing research work in engaging youth, and that's something that we've really looked at doing with other planning processes. What we hear so commonly is we raise our kids, we educate them, they go off, and then they're gone. How do we get them back? And our response sometimes is, well, did you ask them? Did you ask them what they wanted in their community to bring them back? And we believe that engaging youth, high school or even younger, can really help give them that stake back in the community so that they really do think about coming back as they get older. And we also looked at development density, infrastructure, and reusing abandoned buildings as well. So a quick check on this, got a couple more of these, and then we'll wrap it up. Any other feedback or reactions?
No, I like the involving the youth. That's our future, so I'm excited about that.
Yeah. I think the other part that I would offer is that when we talk about our commercial districts, we should talk about all of our commercial districts, right? So, you know, the food deserts in Ward A. We have commercial districts on Commerce Avenue, right, that has no commerce. So we have Hopeman Parkway and where we have in Ward C with large swaths of development and limited food choices, limited service choices. So if it's very auto-centric, so you have to drive to the West End to go get something or the Food Line. So that, those are the options. So I think it's important that downtown, when the market decides to build residential above us, off the storefront level, downtown Waynesboro will continue to thrive and explode. When the museum comes to town, that's sort of set in motion and it will take off. I think it's important that the plan look at all aspects of the city and not just exclusively to downtown.
Okay. I'll move on. Terms of describe a successful engagement process and great feedback here. Align city policies with community vision. Explore small-scale engagement, and that's one thing we like to focus on is more also public intercepts of not just asking folks to come to us, but going to them and finding those events and get a lot of feedback that way. Establish a steering committee. That's the last point in here that I'll hit on. That's a great approach to really have a successful engagement process. Engage and inform decision-makers, maintain clear communication throughout. We're going to put together social media and other communication packets throughout the process and put dates and timelines on those. Foster positive environment for participants. Ambitious but attainable goals. Ensure everyone feels heard. Be inclusive and transparent and reach diverse audiences here. Make sure we have everyone at the table. Any other feedback for us? We're putting together a public engagement plan that will include engagement goals, and any additional feedback to us will help us as we pull that plan together for you.
I'd just like to reiterate what you just said there, that not just inviting people to come to City Hall, but actually going out to the varying different spots within the community to meet and engage constituents. I think that's going to be very important.
Ways that we could use the steering committee to help facilitate that, you know, examples in the last plan where folks were invited to steering committee members' homes, and we had facilitated conversations in their homes with neighbors and folks that they went to church or whomever and came. And that just accelerated the reach of the public engagement process in a way that I hadn't seen before. So yeah, I would echo that. But I'd also just sort of acknowledge that for all the comments on the last slide, look at us. Like, right? It was very, very aligned, I think, with the comments and then that is of our planning commission. So I think that speaks to all of our collective interest to have meaningful and engaging public involvement. So I think that's great.
Do we have any idea when some of these meetings can be set up or what the timing is?
Sure. So, gosh, excuse me. In terms of timing, we would love to get a steering committee together and start meeting by March. I think we can have a kickoff meeting probably late spring as we get into this, and then really hit fall with additional meetings. In terms of public intercepts, really, whatever we can find in terms of events that are out there, public intercepts work wherever you are in the process. And whatever we can find, I think that'd be a great opportunity to get out to folks. We already have a project website, a demo ready, and just a few tweaks to that, and the website should be ready to go out soon.
Is it all about what you can find? What about what you create as far as the public intercepts are concerned? I mean, so if you can't particularly, in particular, find an event that's happening, can you create your own event to?
For sure.
To encourage people to come out to? I'm just thinking, you know, a basic city brewery, come on out. You know, this is what we're doing, so on and so on. I mean, it's in Ward A. And so, you know, come on out to your local church or whatever.
Right. For sure. Yes, and that's a great approach to get out into the community. I think those partnerships with existing organizations like churches, you have neighborhood groups, it's, if you can kind of map out the existing social networks and just use the existing community's networks, that's a great way to get information out and also back. And then with any additional events, like you're describing, close partnerships with those organizations can help there, because a partner organization might be able to sponsor that event or to put that event on, and they have their own mailing list to bring folks out there. We found in some of our exit interviews on meetings that most of the folks that show up, they hear about it directly from someone they know or trust. It might be a neighbor, it might be a coworker or a family member, and something like 80% of folks who show up to the meetings that we run, they hear about it through that network. And whatever we can do to help get messages out through the existing community network, I think that's going to be a big win.
What type of participation are you expecting? So if you put on an event or if someone partners with you in the ways of which you talk about, what's your expectation as far as, you know, a good turnout or whatever? What do you expect to see?
We look more for what's a representative engagement, that we have voices there that can represent different parts of the community. I like to count that more of his success than the number of people, but certainly we'd like to see as many people as we can engage there. It depends on the tool. We've had some surveys recently that got, you know, over that thousand responses mark. You know, we've had some meetings where there's 100, 120 or more folks who were there at the meeting. It really depends on the community. It depends on, each community has its own kind of mark of, some are really apt to show up to events, others, it's a little harder to get them to show up, and you have to kind of just find a different strategy to get to them. But trying to set those measures of success, we want to work with you all to see what would you be happy with in terms of those numbers and what would you all mark as success? And we try to build it towards that. Okay. So just a couple more. Don't mean to take up too much of your time here, but describing a successful planning process, again, I was impressed by how you all were really on the same page between council and planning commission and amongst each other, but we had, involving the entire community is a big mark of a successful process. Make sure that participants in the process and council are aligned on the same page with each other. Again, we heard record-breaking public engagement came up a few times on comments. Having measurable goals and outcomes, I love that in a plan. I love to have something where you can say, to show that we have been successful, and rather than vague statements, clear, measurable statements. Teamwork and civic engagement reflects the needs and wants of citizens, show how goals will be achieved. So again, going back to achievable, step-by-step checklist type of approach. The community having detailed conversations with easy format. So yeah, a lot of consistency here across the board. An additional feedback, again, of, the first one, I had to summarize a lot of these to get them on slides. This one I left unedited of cannot overestimate the importance of input and engagement, opportunities to incentivize commercial activity in kind of these walkable pockets of not just downtown, but throughout the city as well, of the byright uses in the ordinance, of reviewing those and seeing what uses are byright and what might need to be tweaked in future steps after the comp plan update. The early education one is an essential one. I like seeing that comment of what is a comp plan? How can you get involved? We learn a lot about federal government in our high school civics classes, local government. We don't get a whole lot of that. And make sure that people really understand how they can get involved. Yep, looking for a process that the everyday taxpayer perspective, again, a readable document, an achievable document, that there are ways to really hit on that concise document looking forward as well. I might just skip over this just really quick, because just a couple more, and then I'd like to just check in a little bit. Steering committee, we are planning on putting together a steering committee. Their role would be to advise on a clear and effective direction on the planning process, inform city staff and the consultant team on information plans, anything else happening in the community that we should consider that should be brought into the process. Recruit engagement, such an important step of the steering committee to, as Councilman Short was mentioning over there, of really helping to usher the engagement process, and then reviewing materials as we go through. What we have found that's been successful is about a dozen people. That's a good number. If you get much over that, it starts to get a little cumbersome. If you have too few, then you're losing some of that representation that you should be having. We have had steering committees where the planning commission is either the entire planning commission or a portion of the planning commission serves on the steering committee. Also, having some sort of council liaison on that committee would be useful. The group had identified housing, economic development, local service providing services, infrastructure as some key topics, so having some representatives from those areas, I think, would be useful. Also, considering that the roster should be representative of the community, we want to, I mean, again, maybe a little bit more so the numbers, ensure that there's no empty seats there around the table, that everyone is being represented, everyone has a voice here in the process. So that steering committee, if it has that representative feel of the community, that's a mark of success or helps with success. And that is our kind of quick on the steering committee. Next steps for us, because we intend on moving with staff at a good clip here as we get started, assembling the steering committee, beginning, we've started the collecting of data and analyzed that. We'd like to get you an engagement plan that maps out exactly when do these steps happen? What are your goals for engagement step by step? The project website, we have a demo version, which is a quick turnaround to get that published. The project website, we have a demo version, which is a quick turnaround to get that published, to get that online presence up and going. We're going to, next up, work on communication materials and a calendar of when, what, what should be communicated at what times, some social media and other materials, and when they should go out and talking points. And then we would get started on identifying community needs, an important early step here. So, in terms of successful process, any additional guidance to us? We would find incredibly helpful just in this early phase. And then in terms of the steering committee, talking with staff, I believe council would nominate those members for the steering committee. These are just some of the recommendations of how that can be assembled. But obviously, as council, we look forward to getting your committee ready, getting them started. If you have any questions or additional feedback, we'd love to hear it.
For the steering committee, would it make sense to steer the focus of community involvement to the broad changes that we would expect in that area locally to spur more involvement? And then address the citywide potential as a secondary to the local changes? As, or would we do that after preliminary involvement to try to get an idea of what they have in mind to begin with?
On local changes, are you referring to like?
Like wards. Like if we had certain areas, like they mentioned earlier, Commerce Ave, right? So, if you, you know, try to get some community involvement locally around Commerce, if we were planning to try to change the outlook in the future. And then use that as a spur to then, while they're there locally, you know, then to get better turnout.
Oh, sure.
When it's personal. And then we can address the citywide needs, you know, maybe get more involvement that way.
Sure.
I was just curious if you're, if we're, given the duration, right? So, covered to start to finish, what's the duration of the? I think I read that, Leslie told me that once.
Of the entire process?
Mm-hmm.
We had it at two years.
Okay. So, um, so given the duration, I would offer that you might want to go with 18 steering committee members, recognizing that some people aren't going to show up every meeting, may drop off along the way. Because we had that in the last one where I think we appointed, I think every council member had two people that they appointed. And along with, you know, some civic groups and faith leaders and, you know, across the community to try to create that diversification. And then the other thing, too, is that if you, again, doesn't have to be exactly like this or even anything close like the last one. But we did have a couple of Zinger workshops over at Basic City. I will say that, those were very, very well-attended. And, but, you know, Panera, they did it over Panera, Rosenwald. So, yeah. But I would just, I would offer, given the duration and folks, you know, everybody's got, everybody's busy, to make sure that you have at least the, try to hit that 12 every single time. You might want to go with a few more.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
So, there's no action required on this this evening. Item 10 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending City Code Section 86-30 and authorizing increased rates for water consumed through temporary connections and meters at certain locations, including hydrants. Mr. McCray? Mr. Am, put you on.
I'm going to get a little bit just from, on the fly, but thank you all again for having me this evening. So, basically, as you all know, we've seen extensive development, especially residential development. Typically, during the course of those grading operations, construction operations, contractors need access to the city's water system. Kind of, it's sort of a twofold issue there. First and foremost, those are pretty high, have very high potential to impact our system if water is brought back into the system through, so we have, we require backflow prevention at those sites. The other thing we want to do is just, as we've talked some about, water accountability and trying to know better kind of how much water we're producing and account for. So, trying to build some water accountability is a second piece of this. So, this is really about just taking some steps, setting up for us so that we can have a program in place to make sure the water system is protected and then also to provide accountability. What this will allow us to do is actually set up a contractor as a commercial account holder, collect a deposit from them, which certainly isn't going to cover the cost of a completely broken fire hydrant, but it'll cover at least some of the cost of our interfacing with them, things like that. And then as far as the bulk, the outside water rate or bulk water rate, we have a water filling station at Public Works Operations, which we provide water to contractors. Last, these heavy drought years, we've been, had tankers in and out of there consistently for drought control or for, excuse me, for dust control. And so, that hasn't been updated since 2012. So, we were just about, we're well below the market rate on bulk water. So, those are really some of the things we're trying to drive out with these code updates. Just really hitting on those few specific issues within the utilities code.
Okay. I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 86-30?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slow. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Akambi. Any discussion? This ordinance, having been properly introduced and seconded following the public hearing, will receive final consideration at the March 10 meeting. Item 11 is considered adopting a resolution to support for the Federal Emergency Management Agency Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant. Mr. McCormick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. City staff is seeking approval to submit a building resilient infrastructure and communities grant application through the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to FEMA to assist in funding construction of the new Shenandoah Village Drive pump station. As you recall, during the budget process of 2025, the city started identifying some water projects and putting funds aside to eventually pay for a debt payment for those. One of those projects in that was the Shenandoah Village Drive pump station. In the meantime, during Tropical Storm Helene, that pump station became inoperable and disrupted our city's ability to provide drinking water. And so, that made us qualify to apply for this grant. So, this is a 25% match, 75% federal funds for a total of $4.4 million. The city started putting away about $300,000 a year this year. So, by the time the grant came through, you would have $600,000. So, we would need to, during, through the net position process and the water fund, identify the remaining funds, but it would offset not all of that necessary borrowing, but a portion of it. And Mr. McCray is here, who, his department is the one that identified the grant. So, if he has anything else he'd like to add, or if I misspoke on anything, feel free to correct or add.
So, the current facility, the pumps are below ground. So, then between groundwater and the creek, the facility flooded. So, this is to cover the construction of the pump station facility itself with above-ground pumps that would be much more flood-resistant. There's still some auxiliary work, both the intake line to the pump station and the discharge line itself, which are not eligible for this grant because this grant's really focused on emergency preparedness, but it's still a significant portion of the overall project cost.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have a 5-0. Item 12 is citizens' comment.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
No one signed up?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Who wanted to speak?
I think there's a resident.
Wanting to speak, just didn't sign up.
Did you sign up?
I did not sign up, I'm sorry.
We'll give you a freebie this time.
He came in like.
Haseem Hall said at 1625 Ed Hill, here in town. So, it has to do with the comprehensive plan, and I love it. Waynesboro's constantly pushing forward and actually achieving the goals that we put forth. I've been reading through them for years now, like 2006, 2018. They're always, it's interesting to see a city actually hitting a lot of those marks. I read through the 2006, I think it was last winter. And there was one thing that I found, well, actually, there's a lot of things I found. One, we hit a lot of our goals, which is super exciting. But two, on page three, it brings up the idea of like development, which like creating uniform zoning, awesome. Promoting, promote and reinvest in older areas, fantastic. But then there's, the next bullet point on is update ordinance to promote gentrification. And I guess that could be a connotation issue with me, but that definitely rose a red flag. But again, that's 2006, so we're now 19 years removed from that. So, maybe the culture has shifted less in gentrification and more revitalization. But I'm not sure. I was just bringing that to the attention of the city council to look into that and see if that is still part of our DNA as a culture or if we're shifting into more revitalization type of mentality versus gentrification. Because they accomplish similar things, but they, it requires a different nuanced touch to the community to accomplish either or, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 13 is communications correspondence calendar, Mr. Am.
Yes, sir, Mayor Lee and members of council. I received a letter from our friends at the Central Shenandoah Plain District Commission who are applying for a regional housing development grant. And the value of that grant is $1.5 million. But $600,000 of that grant is planned for the Austin Court Project in Waynesboro. And they've asked, the planning district commission have asked whether or not the council and the city generally would supply a letter of support for their grant. And so, this evening, I'm asking for some guidance in that regard about whether you would like us to prepare a letter that the mayor could sign or that I could sign on behalf of the council in support of their grant application. My expectation is that they plan to apply anyway and that our letter, if it is provided, helps their application. So, it's according to your preference.
Okay. Well, considering that we did designate that as revitalization, I think it would only be in line with that process to support. Any issues with that?
Okay, I was on what we said before.
Yeah, well.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I do have one more thing. So, as a reminder, our retreat number two is Friday, 8:30 until 3:00. Are we still, are we still good for that?
We are good.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Now I'm complete.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.